Buenos dias, the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture is now called to order. It is Thursday, May 13, 2021. The time is now 9:03 a.m. Notices for this virtual public hearing were disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets. On Thursday, May 6, 2021, again on Tuesday, May 11, 2021, the notice was also published in the Guam Daily Post on those same days. For the general rules of conduct are as follows. The Zoom meeting is hosted by the Legislature's AB staff and the committee staff, and I thank them for their assistance. The host of this hearing will mute all Zoom participants until called upon by the chair. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking and begin by stating their name for record-keeping purposes. When called to speak, please ensure that you are unmuted. The agenda items for today are as follows. Bill Number 67-36-COR, submitted by the Committee on Air Transportation, Parks Tourism, Higher Education, and the Advancement of Women, Youth, and Senior Citizens by the request of the Youth Congress in accordance with 2 GCA Section 7102. It's an act to add a new subsection I to Section 22107 of Chapter 22, Title VII, Guam Code annotated relative to exempting students from jury service. The next item on the agenda is Bill Number 68-36-COR, also submitted by the Committee on Air Transportation, Parks Tourism, Higher Education, and the Advancement of Women, Youth, and Senior Citizens by the request of the Guam Youth Congress in accordance with 2 GCA Section 7102. This bill is an act to amend Sections 88103 and 88104 and to add a new Section 88103.1 Olive Chapter 88, Title V, Guam Code annotated, relative to adding youth representation to Ikomishon, Ifino Chamoro, Zeni Finatna, Gwen, I Historia, Zeni Lanatla, I Taototano, or the Commission on the Chamor Language and the Teaching of the History and Culture of the Indigenous People of Guam, and to cite this act as the Manhobin Para Ifino Finota Act. I would like to acknowledge my colleagues that have joined me here today. Senator Tony Ada, Senator Amanda Shelton, Senator Joanne Brown, and Senator Talat Titegui. Thank you for joining us at this public hearing. So now to move on to our agenda item, the first item, which is Bill Number 67-36-COR, submitted by the Committee on Air Transportation, Parks Tourism, Higher Education, and the Advancement of Women, Youth, and Senior Citizens by the request of the Guam Youth Congress in accordance with Sections 2 GCA Section 7102, an act to add a new subsection I to Section 22107 of Chapter 22, Title VII, Guam Code annotated, relative to exempting students from jury service. Before we hear from those who have signed up to testify, I would like to ask the Chair of the Committee, Senator Amanda Shelton, to please introduce the bill.
Sis Massey, Madam Chair, and thank you to the committee for hearing this bill today. Again, for the benefit of the committee, Bill Number 67-36-COR was introduced by our committee on behalf of the Guam Youth Congress in accordance with Section 7102 of Chapter 7, Title 2, GCA. All bills passed by the Guam Youth Congress will be introduced by the committee on their behalf. The 33rd Guam Youth Congress held a regular session on February 20, 2021, where they passed Bill Number 2-33-COR, introduced by Representative Al Edric Lebang. This committee received the certification of passage for GYC Bill Number 2-33 on February 24, 2021, and subsequently introduced it as Bill Number 67-36-COR in the 36 Guam Legislature. I will yield to the representative from the Guam Community College for all questions and a proper introduction of the bill. But on behalf of the committee, again, Madam Chair, and to the committee, thank you for hearing this bill so expeditiously. Sis Massey.
Sis Massey, Senator Shelton. So I would now like to open the floor for those that are here to provide testimony. So I'd like to recognize Youth Congress Vice Speaker of the 33rd Guam Youth Congress, Al Edric Seelabang, for his testimony. Good morning. You're welcome. You're welcome to provide your testimony.
Thank you, Senator Perez and members of the committee. So, of course, Bill 67-36 is a bill from Guam Youth Congress. And, of course, in the past legislature, I think in the 35th, there's also similar measure that is introduced to exempt students from jury duty. We all know that jury duty is an important duty. However, it hinders students to fully engage themselves academically. Some students miss work, do makeup assignments, miss quizzes, and make additional time on top of rigorous, challenging classes and struggle to fulfill their course requirement and jury duty concurrently. Currently, Guam law allows some other groups to be excused from jury service, which includes active members of the armed forces, elected officials and judges, active clergy members, active participating attorneys, police officers, firefighters, people who are over 65 and older, and women who are breastfeeding. And, of course, they are exempted unless they choose to serve. This bill affords the students the same benefit, which is to have a choice between being accepted as a juror or choosing to serve as a juror. As a student from the University of Guam, some of my peers have experienced failing classes, receiving a lower grade, or having to withdraw a class. Some of them are taking a five-credit course, which costs about just one class, which is a five-credit course, which is about $1,000, where they have to retake if they fail the course or have to withdraw from the course. With the challenging effects of COVID-19 pandemic and students' learning, it is feeding that we ease students' hardship with Bill 67-36, that is intent of the bill, which is to ease students' hardship. As we all know, we are currently on our finals week right now, and some students are currently preparing most of their time to engage in their classes and finally reviewing their course materials to to prepare for their final exams. And with Bill 67, I think it would give them a peace of mind to focus on completing their course requirement without worrying attending jury duty. And I reach out to some students, and I feel the reason why they're unable to come is because of the finals. And that's basically most of my testimony.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Lebang, for your testimony. We do appreciate that. Next on the list, we do have Dr. Ron McNich here to provide testimony. You are recognized, Dr. McNich.
Thank you, Senator Perez. My name is Ron McNich. I'm a professor at the University of Guam. And I've worked at the university for over 25 years. I apologize if my internet connection may be unstable, and it's unintentional if my internet cuts out while I'm giving my testimony. And I would like to be able to log back in in case that does happen. My comments today are very brief, senators. First, congratulations to the Youth Congress. This is a very worthy bill for them. It's certainly one that affects youth, and it's certainly one that is it shows great initiative on their part. This idea has been around for several years, and it's good that they're trying to advocate for it. Can everyone still hear me?
Yeah, we did.
Okay, thank you. I just got a message. Thank you. So this only applies to students while they're in school. Over the years, I've had
Give him a little bit of time. Maybe he'll come back.
And I think that, in general, this is a reasonable bill. And I do apologize. I did provide written comments. I think that many, many young people There's a list of graduates, both in December and in May. That's an excellent jury pool. If the judiciary needs a group of young persons to serve on juries, that's the list to use in order to locate good jurors. I think that new graduates make excellent jurors. So it's not as if there's no solution to this particular question. And it's a great, it's a more modified method to select jurors. Thank you very much, senators. And I do apologize for the internet connection.
All right. Thank you so much, Dr. McNich. We did lose a big portion of your testimony because of the internet connection. But if it's possible, maybe if you can send in a written testimony to, I guess, reiterate what you said, if we don't capture everything in the questioning.
And I have sent in written testimony. Thank you.
You did. Okay, great. Thank you. We did have others that sent in their written testimony. One from Stephanie Lorenzo, who is a Speaker of the 33rd Youth Guam Congress. And we also did receive some email testimony from two constituents. One from Frank Ishizaki, and it states, "Speaker Chalahi, I wish to submit this written opposition to Bill 67-36-COR." He states, "I oppose all exemptions except for valid hardships or serious medical issues. We are solely reducing the jury pool. I believe that all citizens have an obligation to perform their civic duty. While I've never been selected for jury service in Guam or California, I've never requested exclusion for the reasons proposed in this bill." Thanks, Frank Ishizaki. The other testimony that was received was from, I think it's Walter Short. He states, "Most students have part-time or full-time jobs on top of their studies. I do not think it's right to jeopardize a student's education. Students pay their tuition, and that could be affected by jury duty. Will the government take responsibility for students dropping out, being held back, or will the government pay back the students for classes they fail or have to withdraw from?" Okay, that's the other testimony that was received. The fiscal impact note. According to the Bureau of Budget and Management Research, Bill Number 67-36 is administrative in nature and poses no fiscal impact upon any funds of the government of Guam. Okay, so those were some of the additional information. And I failed to mention, and I'm sure you guys probably realize by now, that I am substituting or sitting in for the speaker. She had another engagement to attend to. So, yeah, gladly substituted her. Anyway, okay, so regards to questions. Yeah, I'm just thinking back in my college days, and I never had, you know, I was never called for jury duty at the time. I guess perhaps I wasn't a resident there, but so that's one of the reasons. But I can't imagine, I'm just trying to think the effect that would have on my studies. And I do see that impact having, I could see that impact, especially, I think, with the community that we have here. You know, like, I think a lot of students are, you know, a lot of students have to work. So that is definitely a concern. And, you know, whether we're going to prioritize their education, I think that's something that's important to consider. But at this time, I'd like to open the floor to my colleagues for any questions or comments. Senator Tony Ada, if you have any comments or questions.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. Do we have a member of the Superior Court from the courts that is on Zoom that we may be able to ask questions from?
Not that I can tell. No, we don't. But yes, that's something we can reach out.
And I think, and I think that's important, Madam Chair, because of the fact that, you know, I believe that the Superior Court of Guam can excuse anyone for hardship, especially when it comes to work, school illnesses, or disability. And I know it's been done in the past, and I just wanted to get a take from the courts, whether, you know, students have submitted an excuse to be excused from jury service due to their schooling, or and how many have actually submitted and was excused or not excused. So I hope that we'd be able to get some type of testimony from the courts to move this forward so that, you know, we get a better idea and understanding of the selection process of those that are attending schools. But I have no other further questions, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you so much, Senator Ada. So the committee did send out invitations to the judicial judiciary, and will definitely follow up with that. I believe Dr. McNich has some input for this question.
Thank you, Senator Perez. This is Ron McNich. I do have some very brief input on this. Over the years, many times, I've had to try to help the students navigate a bureaucratic nightmare with the judiciary, trying to get exemptions on this point. Largely, they're unsympathetic, and I don't mean to sound negative toward them. But unless I have a direct contact, and for many years I did have direct contact to assist students, it's very, very difficult to assist students to get a deliberate exemption without quite a bit of difficulty. It's highly variant. Sometimes it's very deliberate, sometimes it's extremely difficult. I do believe that simply creating for quite a number of reasons. But it is a very strongly bureaucratic process. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. McNich. We did lose some of your input, but if you can maybe provide that too. Okay, Senator Shelton, do you have any questions at this time?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have any questions at this time, but I appreciate the testimony from everyone today. Thank you for being here.
All right. Thank you. And I would like to recognize Senator Talina Krisnelson, who has joined us. Thank you, Senator. Senator Joanne Brown, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I don't, Madam Chair, but thank you very much for the opportunity to sit and listen into the testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Talat Titegui?
Sis Massey, Madam Chair. And thank you, Mr. Lebang, for being part of the process of law and greatly appreciate moving forward on this legislation, too. I think it is important to be addressed. However, you know, I do have some concerns as well. You know, jury service is important to our democracy because, you know, it promotes civic participation. And, you know, it also provides a wide range of individuals to sit on a jury, everything from someone who's in their 40s, someone who's going to school, a student. You know, there's a wide range of it. And that's concerning, too. We could end up eliminating opportunities for parties to a court case from having jury that's made up of individuals of diverse backgrounds. And I think that was the whole purpose that a jury selection was to be made for any kind of case moving forward. But I do understand, and I agree with Senator Ada. I was hoping to ask as well for the judicial side to come and answer some questions on the possibilities of individuals who are, well, what is the ratio of those students being released from jury duty because of hardship? But there is an avenue to allow these students to be exempt from serving on jury duty. But there is a civic responsibility that everyone has to take once they turn 18, you know. But I thank you, Madam. I really don't have any questions, and I appreciate everyone's testimony here today. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Senator Titegui. So I would like to offer the floor for closing remarks. Senator Shelton, you are welcome to provide any remarks, closing remarks.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. And again, thank you to Speaker Chalahi and to the committee for hearing this bill so quickly. I know that we've had several questions from some UOG students who are very interested in seeing where this bill will go and members of the Youth Congress. So I look forward to receiving more testimony from the courts to hear how this is affecting students now and perhaps from other students from the university and the Guam Community College as well before we move this in session. So Sis Massey, again, to the Guam Youth Congress and all those testifying today. Dr. McNich, thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you for all your participation. The time is now 9:23 a.m. Bill Number 67-36-COR is now duly heard. We are going to move on to the next item of the agenda. It's Bill Number 68-36-COR, submitted by the Committee on Air Transportation, Parks Tourism, Higher Education, and the Advancement of Women, Youth, and Senior Citizens at the request of the Guam Youth Congress in accordance with 2 GCA Section 7102. It's an act to amend Sections 88103 and 88104 and to add a new Section 88103.1 Olive Chapter 88, Title V, Guam Code annotated, relative to adding a youth representation to Ikomishon, Ifino Chamoro, Zeni Finatna, Gwen, I Historia, Zeni Lanatla, I Taototano, the Commission on Chamor Language and the Teaching of the History and Culture of the Indigenous People of Guam, and to cite this act as the Manhobin Para Ifinota Act. I would again like to invite the Chair of the Committee on Air Transportation, Parks, Tourism, Higher Education, the Advancement of Women, Youth, and Senior Citizens, Senator Shelton, to introduce the bill.
Sis Massey, Madam Chair. And again, thank you to Speaker Chalahi and the committee for hearing Bill Number 68-36-COR, which was introduced by our committee on behalf of the Guam Youth Congress. The 33rd Guam Youth Congress held a regular session on February 20, 2021, where they passed Bill Number 5-33-COR, introduced by Representative Nolan Flores. This committee received the certification of passage for GYC Bill Number 5-33 on February 24, 2021, and subsequently introduced it as Bill Number 68-36 in the 36 Guam Legislature. And again, Madam Chair, I will yield to the representative of the Guam Youth Congress, Mr. Nolan Flores, for a formal introduction and testimony on the bill.
All right. Thank you, Senator Shelton. So now I'd like to recognize the Guam Youth Congress Representative, Nolan Flores. Welcome, Nolan.
Sis Massey, Senator Perez, and Senator Shelton. Buenos dias, Hafaday. Everyone present, Senator Nelson, Senator Brown, Senator Titegui, Senator Ada. Zen todu man gaigui guinipakku. Nyodu zen yodu para hamzu sizo masi paru ngokoti. Iesina hinino pobleku zeni opportunila. Ugofsen agredesi todu ibidan mimizu. Para putehi susteni zen laala ihaletta i koturata zenifinota. Maguzu nagaidizu guinipakku como representative. Gininunibetsira guahan para i congressional manhobin guahan. Zaparabe apati ihinasoko. I originally introduced this bill in the 32nd Guam Youth Congress, where it was unanimously passed at the term's end. And then upon reelection, this bill became the first of mine to be introduced in the 33rd Guam Youth Congress. I'm therefore very grateful to Senator Shelton for her commitment to introducing the passed bills on our behalf in the legislature and to you, Senator Perez, and the rest of the body for the expeditions action with our bills. As a lover of our language, a current learner, and most importantly, a young Chamor, this bill is a product of my desire to further augment the great work of Ikomishon in the preservation and revitalization of Ifinota. This bill ultimately seeks to ensure that these ever-important efforts are especially tailored to Imanhobin, as it is us, who will carry our language and all that it embodies forward. With the addition of two representatives, two youth representatives, Ikomishon will be better equipped to not only adjust its current efforts to more actively engage youth, but also utilize new and emerging platforms to meet youth where they are and equip them with the language skills they need to not just ensure our language survival, but its vitality for generations to come. Bill 68-36, Madam Chair, also seeks to capitalize on the cultural renaissance ongoing within our island community today. More than ever before, we're seeing young people whose parents may not even speak the language have a strong desire to learn and speak Fino Chamor. By adding youth representatives and further empowering the youngling work of Ikomishon, we are recognizing and actively furthering this reawakening of pride within ourselves and our language and culture. And we are resisting the forces of colonization that continue to harm our people. And finally, we are reasserting our Chamor identity and placing it at the forefront of all that we do. Madam Chair, anginsinezu malaguzu now na imega inagredesi para Ikomishon special menti sisaina amari arseosisaina hopristobo zensisaina rosapalomo putodu yetununiha. Ndakluna sizo masi tatlu, Madam Chair, zantodu namangai guinipaku. Sinhe uopii mesia hafa na finaisinmizu para guahan sizo masi.
This is Massey Nolan for your testimony. And I think it's always great to have youth engagement. I think this is an important development in our political development as well. So I'd like to also recognize our next member that is going to testify on behalf of Bill 68 that I have on the list is Angelana Sablon, President/CEO of Chief Parawa Academy.
Hafaday, buenos dias todu. Mananas sizois para hamzu senadora, senadorzia. Gehe lo saina hopristobo zen administradora loki saina guinifi amari arseo. Sizo masi ni i temponmizu pagu zen naizokumpu para bi quintus pagu, pagu ge again. Inanhusi Angelana Sablon, Guahuwi Presidente and Chief Parawa Academy. Gagizo guinipagu para bayu supporti astina priniponi i oktu ni manhobin para ifinota. Finanana malaguzu para binahi agredasmentu tatlu sisaina hop, saina guinifi. Zen todu i memberi komishon para ifina esai malafensi enetoto ni enteguisen loki itetu ni mamila. You know, seguru zu nati debiano astina itetu lo gofiputanti pas para binahi ha hamzu agredasmentu sizo masi. Para Guahu, impotantina guaha representashon giri ni manhobin gihalami komishon ifinotamoru. Gihalama astina toto ikina lamten inina laala ifinotas zenina bantsani manyamoru. Ihinengaku namaga hitna ndakluna pati iparatanaseguru na guaha dinanya zen namangai manhobin gi entry itetu perumona. Kada dia gihalami kumnedat huliliye na kulan guaguha inadespota gi entry manyanata zeni manhobin. Inadespota gi tiningo, inadespota gi hinangi, inadespota gi spiritu. Zaohongi na ndakluna astina resol na guaha mega iminimu gi entry taototata porilenguahizan i koutura za ti mandada nyahitesta. Gi kara rasa, you know, gi finalafani tempu samprija uguaha tinalike gi lingwahi. Za zengen manhihitamona gi entry tinalike sigiha sampridumanklu inadespota. Estamas dinahu ni minalingu ni ifinota. Munga loki na paratanafalingu ihinengeata zenifondashon i koturata. Paguna tempu i manhobin, you know, huliliye na hinasunia nasiga siha mas tumungu. You know, za kula ti marrespetutuzi esta itiningo isinas zeni manenhalomi isinas za tidabi azuno. Tidabitegui. Lo huliliye loki na kulan melilingu iprinatika nipinexai gina ni sina para i manhobin gi entry kumnedat za azu loki tidabi. Zen nagogof tristizo esdi zangenuhasu sa disti dumodankulu zo mafanagu zo za hugofli igina pagu inatumo ipatgu zenisina. Puegi astina itetu, you know, itetu i inabantsani lingwahi inmami za puegi entry inatorat netinalike ni lingwahi. Ques para Guau, esti ipatzi ni manhobin gi kumbetashon zen iginiha ni sina nu i manhobin. Esti samprimo na laala mona i impotantisiha na tiningo zen hinangi gihalami koturatas zenilinguahita mesia hafa na tempu malafan zen mesia hafa na tinalike guaha. Ti ilaku na paraufina maulek todu i problemas zengen mapasas astina priniponi. Lo, mesias tiya tatatuun guini, you know, adu mididi na i manhobin ufunyano gi kumbetashon zen loki i manyanata gi tiningo ilinguahizan koutura umatatuun pumoku. Umatatuun pumoksa ifum, footma Imanhobin para umakatga mona estina toto. Pas gof impetanti esti na kinalamten para ita'outa'outa zen tisinya tatohu zen zengen guaha inadispatu. Guaha tinanya pagu ginani Imanhobin para i sina'zen loqui itetu i sina'para umaportlusi zen uma poksa Imanhobin. Pas malagua para bisangan na niita fandanya talu para ilenguahita, para i koturata zen para ihinengeta. Sijuzmasi.
Sutusmasi, Ms. Sablon, thank you so much. And we will now recognize former Senator Hope Kristobo, who's also a member of the Komishon, for her testimony. Good morning.
Good morning, senators, and good morning, the Committee on Air Transportation, Parks, Tourism, Higher Education, and the Advancement of Women, Youth, and Senior Citizens. Thank you for this to testify on Bill 68-36COR, the Actun Manhobin Para Ifinota. First, I would, my internet connection is rather unstable, and so I want to pre-apologize for that. I want to commend Angelana for her testimony this morning. It is that kind of spirit that really makes us proud as Chamorro people, that she brings forth all the points of why we need to pass the bill, but more importantly, why we need to continue to maintain our language and continue to talk about our history and our lina'la ita'outa'otano.
Sutusmasi for nu invitashon para estina ine kumo publiku. Guahu si hope i Kristobo i ge'helu i komishon ifinota moru zen ifina'na'gu ni historia zen nilina'la ita'outa'otano for short Ikomishon. Ga'igi guini loqui gi public hearings si señora Anne Marie Blas Arceo, i administradora ni ahenshan momi. Matuham na dos para bayu insopti esti na legislashon ni tafafa na i Bill 68-36COR. Sumenta kiloe estina hinasu gininifamagoonta gi Guam Youth Congress. Inapraba zen inhe'zi na hungan ta'umenta inumerun i membersija gi mangae'lu i komishon zen tanak saunau Imanhobin. Inrekomenda loqui na uno ha na inapunta ginin i congressional Imanhobin sia umana'ha lungi mangae'lo. Na magufsa inrekonisa guini na priniponi na debi di maga'hi na ugai kapasidad zen uproficienti i prohimu ni para umember guini na ine noni mangae'lo. Impetanti na i member nu para mana'saunau debi di hu'kumprendi. To du ya reglamento zen ilai ni gumigiha i komishon. Debiloki di uginigiha nu imaga'plano ni itzmalalani to du i actividatsiya ni guinigi komishon. Pinat ifinota ini'isa gi ihinta siha zen debi di ulistu zen upirao estina hobensita para hobensitu para u saunau gi idesashon zen itetu i hine'non mangae'lo. Inkumprendi loqui na pori es tau momi kumo ma'nyaina. Impetanti esti na priniponi para usopti itinituho nipinexai zen inisgaiho Imanhobin para umakontinuja mo'na itetu i komishon gi Iman mamaila na tempo. Purutimo, inkumiti ni ine'noni mangae'lu i komishon na para bayu in adahi zen insopti esti i Actun Manhobin Para Ifinota zen bayu na seguru na bayu in pasa papa gi Imanhobin iteningo' momi. Kosakita kontinua una la'la iti. Sutusmasi, kada da esti pa'gu na'oga'an, ni por estina opsin dadan listu. Anari, aminados zen zengen guaha kuestionizo. Guaha loqui no numerun telefongi ofisi na pa'gu, na te'opor spin 50139, and malaguanzo in agangan, itzen momi nu email address komishon.chamorgmail.com. Listuham zen si Anne Marie para ben respuesta i kuestionan midzo.
Donkulu na sijuzmasi, Chairperson Hope Kristobo. Thank you for that. And I would like to now recognize Commission Member Anne Marie Arceo for her testimony.
Sabin sumanau ha dut zengi sina'ho, humaminados guina testimonio. That was our, both our testimonies. So just to say that I support, who supporti esti na priniponi. To do dos ginin i komishon zen i horao kumo Guahu ge'helu, samasana'gi mangae'lu horao loqui who supporti esti na priniponi para Imanhobin zen i reson pu'to du sumanau masangan est'gu ni. Sutusmasi.
Sutusmasi, Anne Marie. It's so great to see all of your faces this morning on such a positive measure. So, and I do believe that, you know, I guess the timing is just right, it seems. There's a swell of youth activism, I suppose, and wanting to carry out and continue the culture. And it's great that they're, you know, they're speaking the language and it puts me to shame. So I definitely would need to learn, learn the language and learn from our own leaders from all ages. So, you know, thank you for being here. And I just, yeah, thank you for your participation today. I don't have any questions, just more or less just support for this measure. And I think that, yeah, it's great to see such leaders come up in the forefront that are so young. And I think learning from the sinas at this time, it's a good, a good combination. We know that in reviving our language, that combination between the grandmother, the grandparent, or the child, the grandchild is very strong. And, you know, I can see that also happening on the board itself. So that's a synergistic combination that we need at this time. So, thank you. I would like to open the floor to my colleague.
Invite questions in English.
I'm sorry?
Yes, if I may, I invite the senators' questions in English. Yeah, really, this is a great bill. I'm so happy that it was introduced and we applaud the youth congress for their, as you may say, activism. This is a very important legislation because of its significant bearing on the future of our language, our history and culture, and for assuring that from now on, Ikomishon will have the input and the decision by our youth on the future of our language. It's indeed a great honor all around and it brings to fore our responsibility to pass on our knowledge and to continue to care for and to support our youth. And I'm so happy that there, it is noted in the bill that any member of the Komishon must revere a strength capacity, a certain capacity, including the proficiency in the language, because for the most part, we do speak Chamorro and we expect that decisions are, you know, are made accordingly with the input of the youth having full understanding of what is at discussion. We are at a point of our history now, we are newly, actually, we're about four years old on this new composition of the Komishon, and we are full-fledged ahead on our language revitalizations, many of which hopefully you will read in the annual report. So please avail yourself to that annual report that should be in soon.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chairperson Kristobo. So now I'd like to open the floor to my colleagues. Senator Amanda Shelton, do you have any comments?
Sutusmasi, Madam Chair, and sijuzmasi to the panel for being here today, to the Commission members, as well as Representative Flores and Angelana from Chief Harao Academy. Sutusmasi for your testimony. And I am also in full support of this bill and commend the Guam Youth Congress for their advocacy and their vision to include youth members on this commission. And I know I've spoken with Representative Flores and other members of the Guam Youth Congress to continue pursuing this for other boards and commissions of the government of Guam to ensure that we have the youth's vision and representation in all that we do and the decisions that we're making, whether it be for language and culture or housing and development, that we have the foresight of our young people to add value to the decisions that we're making every day for the people of Guam. So sijuzmasi, Guam Youth Congress, I look forward to many more bills to come.
All right, thank you, Senator Shelton. Senator Talina Cruz, is she, Nelson, is she here? I think she stepped off a little bit. Okay, Senator Adda, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have any questions. Just like to thank the Commission for their testimony and all those who participated in testifying on this piece of legislation. I look forward to the committee doing the committee report and hopefully moving on to our session. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, everyone.
Right, thank you so much, Senator Adda. Senator Joanne Brown?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I certainly appreciate all the testimony that has been provided and certainly to the Guam Youth Congress for providing this bill and moving it forward to the Guam Legislature. Listening to the comments of Ms. Angela, and I just want to make sure I get that, Angelena? Angelana, Angelana Sablon, with her comments with regards to how important it is to have our young people be able to carry forward our language and our culture, and certainly having a youth member present and engaged would help set that, that direction, I think, very much. We look forward to seeing a lot more of our young people learn the language and be immersed in the language. And those of us of our generation grew up at a time when speaking our native tongue was not very common. We were raised to speak English and occasionally we had our Chamorro classes to supplement. But we didn't grow up at a time where our language was taught to us and pretty much a common part of our day and our daily lives. And certainly, if we lose that and if we lose our language, we're going to lose our culture. And as time goes on and as we see changes and, you know, all different types of cultures that are coming into Guam and living here, we need to have the same level, if not more, pride in who we are and where we come from. And certainly, the ability to carry that on is in our language. And so I'm very supportive of, of having a youth member. And it's one of the reasons I have my son in a school, that I want him to be encouraged and learn how to speak the language so that he can appreciate his lineage and where he's from. And I think that's what's going to allow our, our history and our culture and our people to survive. So, thank you very much. I'm very supportive of this bill and I want to thank everyone who's provided testimony this morning. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Senator Brown. Senator Tadequie?
Sutusmasi, Madam Chair, for the opportunity. And ibukomishon i Chamorro. I'm so, you know, happy this bill is up and ready for, to go on the session floor and ask you, Madam Chair, to please push this through. It's so important, being able to be a part of watching the Komishon in action right now as we're doing the, and it's not name changes, it's the restoration of the names of our villages. It's restoring, not changing. And I think if there's anybody that could be a great part of this Komishon, you know, when they're going to these meetings to speak to the community, it's our youth. It's to see them, their eyes, look in their eyes, that this is the generation we have to sustain our identity to. And it just, I get very emotional when I speak about this. And it just, I'm so happy, you know, Nolan, that you brought this forward and just listening to you speak Chamorro. I mean, I have my dictionary with me all the time and trying to, you know, speak the language and, but that shouldn't stop any of the other people in Youth Congress or the youth out there to be a part of the Komishon. And you don't have to be a member, from what I gather, you can listen in to these meetings and understand what they're doing and help it along. But I do have a question, Nolan, with regards to the selection of who's going to be the representative. Would the, would the Youth Congress be open to requiring that it's, that its representative to the Komishon be selected by a majority of vote of all the youth representative instead of through an appointment by the Youth Congress Speaker?
Sutusmasi, Senator Tadequie. Yes, I do think the Youth Congress would be open to that, to changing that. I originally chose that specific wording, the appointment by the speaker, because I believe that's how all, all other appointments to youth boards are made in the Youth Congress. So it would be unique if we were to change it to that. But I do think we'd be open to that.
Okay, that's just maybe a suggestion so that all, and you know, I know that Senators Sabin and I, we always talk about wanting to take our classes and doing as much as we can. And I, kudos to her for learning the inefresi without looking at the paper, like most of us. And I'm on that road, too, of doing the same thing. Angelana, you are an inspiration to us all as well, and I just want to thank you for being here to testify in favor of this legislation. And, and thank you again for teaching our youth, you know, the language that you do at Harao. And Anne Marie, of course, an inspiration too as well to me, you know, just since I've known you. Biba, you know, for everything you're doing and God bless you and everyone. Hope, of course, I'll be there, anything you need and help with the Komishon to keep it going, because this is our identity, this is who we are, and if we lose that, we've lost everything. Everything. So, bibi komishon, biba Chamorro, and sijuzmasi.
Sutusmasi, Senator Tadequie. So I believe we were expecting more people to testify. I believe the person has not arrived yet. Perhaps we can accept written testimony on his behalf. So at this time, perhaps I would like to allow closing statements by Senator Amanda Shelton.
Sutusmasi, Madam Chair, and again to the Guam Youth Congress, Representative Flores and all of the panel members here today in support of this legislation. I think again, you, the committee, and Speaker Terlahi for hearing this bill so expeditiously, and I look forward to it moving quickly so that we can act on it on the floor and look forward to the continued collaboration with the Guam Youth Congress for these types of initiatives. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda Shelton. I'm sorry, I forgot to offer the floor to Senator Adda. I do apologize if you have any, I know I'm going out of order here, but if you have any comments or questions.
Madam Chair, you did recognize me earlier. Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you. All right, so I believe there are no other testimonies or questions by my colleagues. You know, at the time, the time's now 9:50 a.m. Bill 68-36COR is now duly heard. And I believe the committee is going to be in recess until 11 a.m. for the next bill. So thank you to all that have participated today and for all your comments, and we'll look forward to moving this bill forward. Sutusmasi.